Good evening. Welcome to the July third Newburgh Public, uh, Newburgh City Council meeting. I'm good. I call the meeting order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Counselor McBride?
Here.
Counselor Wheatley?
Here.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman?
Here.
Counselor Kilburg?
Here.
Mayor Rosacher?
Here.
Counselor Carmen?
Here.
And I'll call in Counselor Floyd after he's sworn in.
Shall we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregardless, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Well, Happy Independence Day, everybody, and thanks for being here tonight. Okay. The first thing we're gonna do is fill the position vacated by Denise Bacon for the rest of her term, hopefully. And that is going to be Glenn Floyd. If you'd like to step on up to that microphone.
All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Glenn Floyd.
I, Glenn Floyd.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support and.
The Constitution and laws.
And laws of the United States.
I will support the Constitution and laws of the State of Oregon.
I will.
I'll do shorter sentences.
Thank you.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the State of Oregon.
Of the State of Oregon.
I will support the Charter.
I will support the Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Newburgh.
Of the City of Newburgh.
And I will.
And I will.
To the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Of a City Council member.
Of the City Council member.
Of the City of Newburgh.
Of the City of Newburgh.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And just to let you know, that is a very difficult thing to do when you're as nervous as you are. All right, Glenn, come on up, make yourself comfortable, key that mic and tell us about Glenn Floyd.
Uh, I've been, uh, worked at the mill for many years, worked, uh, through high school at machine shops here in Newburgh. I've, uh, spent probably better than fifty years here locally. Was at Eleventh, uh, Street on, uh, on, uh, River Street for many years with my mom. And then moved to, uh, the Dallas for a short time, came back. And then I was, uh, here on, uh, Tenth and College for many years after going for a brief stint out at Camp Yamhill. And so I've been mostly in the maintenance field and all like that. So, uh, worked some politics, but, uh, this is the first time I've always been behind the scenes normally, so. That's the gist of it. And so here I am.
Well, you will not be behind the scenes anymore. Does anybody have any questions for Glenn? All right, well, welcome to the council. And I assume that you're going to be running for reelection soon, so we'll, we'll have a lot to talk about between now and then. Now, we have a, we have a vacancy on our Planning Commission, the ex officio position. Would anybody like to nominate Glenn for that position?
I'd be happy to nominate Glenn as the ex officio member for the Planning Commission.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded to appoint, uh, Glenn Floyd to the ex officio position to the Planning Commission. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you, welcome. Next is one of our favorite parts of our meetings. And I hear that he has a hard, tough voice today, but he'll get through it.
So, yes, I have to confess, I've got back into my paddling team that I was off while I was in school for those two years. And I was screaming my head off for us to win on Saturday, so I have lost my voice a little bit. But we'll see if we can make it work. And these are going to be the events for June of twenty twenty-four. But I do have a couple of other quick announcements I'd like to make before I start using the old clicker. First of all, I wanted to announce that the emergency campsite that we had opened for folks who were unhoused has been closed. It was closed because we've managed to develop a good relationship between our police officers and YCAP, which will enable YCAP to let the officers help people into their shelter. And by doing so, that took away the need for that campsite. And of course, there was also a change in the legal framework nationally. And then the second thing I wanted to talk about a tiny bit, which is kind of breaking news. We have got a finalist for our engineering contract. And the company is called Keller Engineering. They're headquartered in Idaho. And they also have offices in Salem and Portland, so they cover the region. The contract will be coming before council next session. And we've got a lot of work to do, so I pushed it out to council to let them read it, but the public will be able to see it soon. And in that contract, there'll be a resolution next time. But I'm going to have that, the, the new city engineer here next time, so that you folks can meet the new city engineer and ask some questions. And his name is Travis Smith, P E, gives a, an engineer with a stamp, obviously. And Travis will work on giving general engineering advice for land use decisions, as well as city engineering review and things like working on our master plans. So all those things that city engineers would do. And this represents a ninety thousand dollar saving per year over the previous arrangement. So that will be very effective and we hope that that will continue to save us some money. Okay, so moving along. And in our administration section, we don't usually cover admin things at the beginning of the order for this section, but I wanted to talk about some things that are coming before council soon. And they are connected to council's request to simplify and improve the rates process, as well as the shift to two-year budget cycles. So although there is going to be some committee work coming on rates, there is also some administrative parts that have to happen in terms of changing the timing, if it is the will of council, to go to two-year budget cycles. And of course, this will involve a lot of work that is coming through the year, reexamining the rates, building and review process, starting to look at how we might shift to a two-year budget cycle. And integrating for the first time ever, the capital improvement program more logically with the two-year budget cycle that we're going to propose. And I've got a very busy slide here. But I wanted to show you what the dream might look like. So if you imagine if we were able to do two-year budget cycles, they would align very nicely with four-year CIP cycles. And the two-year budget cycles would nest inside four-year CIP cycles. It could also align with the rates model building, which would mean that the rates would have to stay as they are today for an extra six months. You see where it says bridge on the diagram? And that would cause everything to line up really nicely. And it would also align with our system development charge reviews, since they are already on two-year cycles. And what I'm trying to say is that this machine that I'm suggesting could be a beauty. It could be a thing of wonder, because it would be very administratively efficient. And there's gonna be a lot more about this. But I did want to say to folks listening at home and also, you know, we've talked with the council before about this, but why two-year budget cycles? Why does it matter? There are many reasons, but the biggest reason is to make capital improvement projects fit inside a twenty-four month span of time, rather than have them always get chopped in the middle by the one-year cycle, which means you're always doing a budget adjustment and it's inefficient. And most capital projects take eighteen to twenty months to finish. It would save a massive amount of staff and council and committee work time, which could be better used for other things. And it would more rationally realign the rates process to tie into the budget process. So just a sneak peek, and I'll be coming back before council to seek approval before even going down this road. I'll be looking for a motion to proceed. Okay, so. And now over to planning happenings. There were new applications in June for design reviews for different locations, two partitions. We also did some other code adjustments and staff is continuing to review building permits and building department activity, which is higher than we thought it would be in Lafayette and Dayton lately, recently. And that's bringing in more revenue than we had predicted. Because we do the, well, the building division work for them. Staff facilitated two pre-application meetings, a proposal to develop a commercial site for a new restaurant, and this one's an oddball one to me, folks. A cat cafe, whatever that may be, in the downtown area, hopefully employs lots of people. And, and hopefully they keep the cats and the coffee on a separate stream, I hope. And there was also, of course, Public Works Day. We had lots of people included in Public Works Day. We made some lovely t-shirts for the kids and it was a lot of fun all around. And here is a couple of the things from Public Works Day. And there's Abby, our student planning commissioner, and Fay looking for ideas for the city. And they collected those on a board. And now over to police accomplishments. Officer McDonough received a yellow, retrieved a yellow wagon. It was nicked by, from a, for a local resident. And the resident was very happy to have the stolen property returned. A new K nine officer and K nine Ike are in training right now. An all department picture was taken, the first one for over seventeen years. And of course, this is important, because we are Oregon's only middle-sized community with a fully-staffed police department, as you know. And here's a couple of pictures, and there's Rappay and Ike figuring out what's what. And there is that smashing picture. I T, we did a whole bunch of upgrades to our G I S mapping system, bringing it up to the latest level. And I'm hearing that the mapping system is working more effectively than it has been recently. Did some improvements to dispatch. We also evaluated and purchased a new security tool that will help monitor our internal network to limit the possibility of cybercrime. Other I T updates were completed, including our virtual desktops, bringing it to the latest long-term version. And with the end of the fiscal year, lots of other purchases and projects were completed, including additional cameras and door readers for the maintenance yard and for the library to increase our security. Speaking of library, June the first summer reading program began for all ages. Uh, author employer Bethany Lee was our first library event. And then there was just a ton of events as usual in the summer. And as you know, Corey continues to smash my circulation numbers and is doing better than I did when I was a library director, so it's very good. Now, the library was vandalized when a B B was shot at the Carnegie window where the pride flag usually hangs in June. One pane of glass was shattered, while the original nineteen twelve window remained intact. The juvenile was quickly apprehended by the rapid work of our police department. The city will be seeking restitution of five thousand dollars, and I will be asking the judge for the juvenile to clean the toilet. We shall see what the judge says. Yep. As of June twenty-fifth, the city is in final negotiations with the winning bidder Keller, and I explained a little bit about that. And actually, the information I just gave you supersedes this slide, so now we know the name of the gentleman who will take on that role. Additionally, the staff has been working on the new capital improvement process, so that it can do that in a more efficient way. And I will be bringing to you soon the result of the worst streets survey. And this is really interesting, because the anecdotes that people felt about streets, when we mapped those on top of the engineering data, they actually lined up. So the way that police patrol felt about street conditions and the road condition index lined up. And I now know what our worst streets are, and so I'm going to be bringing that to you. A request for proposals for street repairs, which went out regionally. We got six really good proposals. We were just beginning to work our way through that. We're gonna have the cheapest number for each type of road repair. And so you're gonna expect to see road repairs happening quicker and more effectively in the near future. More on that soon. And the new, sorry, this, this text is small. The new CIP process will probably run something like the pattern that you see here. Starting with a cash forecast, engineering design, coming up with a CIP list, bringing it forward, and then council will review the CIP list, have a good chance to ask any questions and get input fed into the system before the CIP list becomes final and enters the budget process. And of course, then you will see it again during the budget process. So that's how this is envisaged to work with Keller involved. Recent public works maintenance actions, water meters serviced, a hundred and seven. More maintenance broken down there, meters installed eight, debris swept, sewer mains nine hundred feet cleaned out of disgusting sludge. And here is some of the challenges, working up a high grade with a manhole near the airpark. We had to pull a fully loaded Vector up the hill to get the Vector truck. That's a vacuum cleaning truck that can lift the soil with a, with a machine that does that. Up the hill, big challenge, but we got it done. And then here's the Britcher and Hayes roundabout, which wasn't looking so pretty. So we got that one cleaned up, and we're looking at doing more roundabouts soon for cleanup. City Recorder, in June, City Recorder's office managed an application and appointment process for a smashing candidate for the District Three vacancy. Opened election filings for the upcoming general election, provided records training to lots of employees, developed a new process for council agendas, and managed shutting down the contract for the agenda management software, because the company failed us. Rachel gave them a deadline, they failed, she fired them. Excellent work. Human resources, we focused a good deal of attention on recruitment this month, using attract as well as the usual postings for government jobs, and we got some promising candidates into the interview stage. Start of June, we wrapped up the second of two collective bargaining agreements, which comes before you this evening. And H R intended, attended the employer benefit renewal meeting for twenty twenty-five to see what the general landscape looks like within the industry. And here are some of our recent job openings. Now, I will say, we are really struggling to get those concrete jobs filled. If you know anyone interested in being a concrete finisher who would love to have a job and would like to have great benefits and a great work environment and help fix our sidewalks, please apply. So that is it for sunny June. And as you can see, as always, the residents' tax dollars have been put hard to work. Any questions, folks?
Thank you, Will. I know one thing I've been getting a lot of phone calls about lately is the, uh, the camp for the, the homeless people here in Newburgh. Do you, uh, you wanna make, tell us what's going on there?
Oh, Honorable Mayor Rusacher, I, I did address that at the start of my remarks. But, uh, no, no worries. Yes, so the campsite has been shuttered, because it is no longer necessary. YCAP have worked closely with the police chief, and in fact, the police officers' mobile desktops now have a way to contact YCAP, so as to get people into the shelter more efficiently. So that capacity solving problem took away the need for it. And it's better to have people sheltered in a, a proper shelter than in an open field, in my opinion.
Thank you, Will. Next is the consent calendar. Uh, one of the councillors has already asked to remove the Winoz, Winozki Stormwater bid from that, so I've made that item eight point O on our agenda. So our consent calendar has one item, the, uh, ask me, uh, approval. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent calendar.
A second. Robin or Derek?
Second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Thank you, that's done. Next is public comments. We have one. Buddy Cook? Judging by your address, I know what you're here to talk about.
Challenged in many areas. Um, I knew, moved to Newburgh, like I said, I've been in Newburgh thirty-eight years. I've been in my particular address for thirty-five years. And fortunately or unfortunately, I know Glenn very well. Congratulations, Glenn. June ninth, two thousand twenty-two, Cal Erath died. Cal Erath is my direct neighbor. I share a fence between his property and mine. The last two years have been horrendous for me. At first, there wasn't a whole lot of things going on, and then it became real obvious people were transitioning across my backyard and passing fentanyl to the occupants in the backyard. There were many, many tents. There was as many as twenty-five people on the property at the time. So I started, I asked officer, I said, what, what do I do about this? And he said, well, you have to have a no trespassing sign. Okay, that's pretty easy. Put up a couple of no trespassing signs, and I said, if I get a picture, is there something you can do about that? And he said, absolutely. You get a picture, we'll follow up. So I installed five cameras. Unfortunately, they don't seem to record the way I want them to record. But they do function, but they're not always on. You hit the record button, you get thirty minutes. In this process, I've encountered at least four people coming across my backyard. And those are the ones that I personally encounter. I have no idea how many people actually transitioned. My mayor, my, my neighbor on Fifth Street is Miriam Chavez. And one day I was out, and she says, hey buddy, do you have any rat problems? Said, rats? She goes, yeah, rats, you know, big furry animal. Uh, no, Miriam, I, I don't have any rat problems. Why do you ask me? She says, my husband has killed fourteen rats in the last three weeks. Wow. She stepped back, she pointed to Cal Erath's property and says, I think they're coming from there. Okay. About a week after that, we had acquired two new cats. From a couple that was going to Arizona and they had to ditch their cats. And, um, my wife said she bought a mouse toy for the cats. I came up from the basement one day. She was sitting in her chair and the coffee table was blocking her point of view. And there was an object on the floor right next to the coffee table. And I said, so honey, how big was that, that mouse toy you bought the cats? And she holds up her hand, you know, it's like this big. Okay, that's not the toy. It was a rat, and it was literally this big. She peeked around the coffee table and screamed. I took the rats out and told her that I'm keeping these cats forever, because they clearly killed the rat, although I didn't see any markings on it. A week after that, we were at my mother's house in the Tri-Cities and our baby, or our house sitter sent us a picture of a second rat almost exactly in the same spot the first one was. So I had a problem. I started looking through the house. I found how they were getting in. I covered it up. I then wa, went and bought three pounds of rat poison, took it over and said, please use this. We have no rats anymore. But there have been many, many other issues relating to this property. It's gone on for two years, and it has gotten better in some respects. Um, there was a, a discovery of a power cord that had been buried under a raised bed that I had put that went to the house. I wondered why my power bill jumped two hundred dollars for two months. They were stealing power from me. I asked for two witnesses to come to no, to tonight's meeting, so they can verify what I'm telling you. One guy helped me remove the electric wire that was underground. And the other one was Miriam Chavez, who could testify to the rodent problem. This has got to change, please. Um, it is my understanding that on a condemned property, it can't be occupied. Well, there've been many times I've walked by during the evening and I've seen the flicker of a light inside the building, meaning somebody has a fire going inside the building. There was a pipe that was put out on my side of the property, up through the chimney. And you can tell by looking at the pipe that the siding is black, i.e. it was on fire. Fortunately, it didn't spread to the rest of the house, or maybe that's not fortunately. But in any event, the place needs to be condemned. People, I don't want any neighbors. I would be a lot happier if I didn't have neighbors. And so I'm begging the City Council to find a solution. It's not bad today, but it can change in a heartbeat. In fact, my renter, Rick, um, told me this morning that he thought there were new residents, uh, on the property. Thank you.
Oh, thank you for speaking tonight. Um, I know this has been an ongoing issue, because we've talked about it. Um, I'm wondering if we can get an update on where we're at. I know, I think the police have tried to do things. What can the city do? Is there something more we can do? I mean, this is completely unacceptable.
The problem is that the lazy, useless bank that holds the note, where this man that passed away has no heirs or family members able to step in to take charge of this. So it falls back to the bank who has the note to condemn the property and get it on the market. We have written to them and emailed and called. And we've had police out there hundreds of times doing enforcement actions. And we've even talked to a subcontractor that the bank forwarded to us, saying that something would happen about it. And the subcontractor said they wouldn't condemn the property by boarding it up, and as long as they saw people were still there. So we became like a catch twenty-two, kind of a chicken and an egg situation. The bank won't do anything if there's anyone there, but there's people there, and that's the problem. So they don't, I, I shouldn't say anymore about why, thank you for the bank. And that's the core problem. Now, we have asked our legal help to see if there's any other more obscure legal ordinances or state regulations that we could possibly use to exercise eminent domain or something over the building. And, and, uh, uh, it appears that there are not many options of that sort. Although I will check in again with James and see if there's been any further research or anything new that's developed. Although I will check in again with James and see if there's been any further research or anything new that's developed. But that is really the problem that we're facing is there's nobody to take charge of this estate.
My understanding of eminent domain is if the property presents a hazard to the open public market, then it can be taken over and resolved in the benefit of the public. My nickname is John Q Public, by the way.
We, those kind of conversations you can have with the city manager, um, at a different time. We have legal counsel who is very well versed in what eminent, when it can and can't use. We are doing everything, well, we're doing what we believe we can do to try to rectify the situation. We all, um, we all sympathize, empathize with you. And, you know, if you have good ideas like that, please privately or, or, you know, through the normal channels, contact the city manager with any ideas you have. We'll be happy to pursue anything and everything that you could do. Uh, we're on your side on this. We, you know, we don't like it either. Fortunately, we don't have to live next to it. So you do have our empathy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you do me a favor and click that button again so the mic shuts off? Were you through, Will? Was that, did you have anything else to say on that?
Alas, that's kind of where we're at with this one right now.
So now for new business. We're gonna go to our new item eight point zero, which is the Wainuski Stormwater Project. Sarah, right? Were you, are you presenting the Wainuski project?
That's Fatin.
Oh, thank you. Come on up. Go ahead for the record, tell us who you are and who you're representing. And I think that some of the councillors do have questions for you.
Yes, my name is Fatin Abdullah. I'm working in position engineering coordinator, engineer, project coordinator with the engineering division. Uh, I'm here for the Wainuski Stormwater Project bidding aware. So if you have any questions about the projects, about the background, the history, I'm here. I'm happy to help and answer the questions.
Just to help me understand it, there have already been three vendors hired and used for different aspects of this in advance of any work being done. How much have we paid to each of those vendors or maybe even just total of the three? How much have we spent?
Yes. Civil engineering design. Uh, we paid for this contract, uh, forty-two seventy-seven, and we paid for this moment at thirty-five thousand one twenty-seven. And balance to finish, it's seven hundred sixty, sixty-fourty-three. For, uh,
Excuse me, which vendor, what was the name of the vendor?
Uh, the vendor is H B H. The civil engineering, this is the designer for the project. And we have a Pacific Hepatitis Service. Uh, the contract, it's ten thousand forty-three. We paid for so far, uh, one hundred forty-three six. And we balance to finish, it's eight ninety-nine-three. And for the surveying, uh, we have a Leyland McDonald surveyor. So this is a contract three thousand three hundred. And we finished and paid all the contract.
Go ahead, Will.
So the item that lies before us this evening is actually the part that will finish the project off and get this one done and get it off the CIP list and get it off the SDC list.
I know this is just going to show my ignorance, but that's okay. We, we have very capable, skilled staff. I know you know, and this is beyond them to finish it with extending the flow. And I don't know exactly what a rip wrap is, but it's, it's beyond the scope of what our staff can do.
So it's not so much that our staff couldn't do this particular work because they could. It's more that in order for them to continue to do the maintenance things and the DEQ inspections and all the other things that maintenance has to do, potholes, you name it. If we were to dedicate a crew to do this type of project, that would cause us to miss our mark. And I'm sorry, Russ isn't here tonight to explain more about that. But just those deliverables, those ongoing things that we have to do. And for a practical point of view, flushing valves, cleaning hydrants, unblocking sewer lines, none of it is glamorous, but it does tie up our blokes a lot of the time. And obviously, that's why sometimes for a construction project like this, we do need to bring in a contractor.
Can I have a follow-on to Peggy's? Okay, the door's been opened and I can ask this question that I've wondered, this is not a, I've had similar thoughts. So has there ever been a cost, a cost analysis of what the costs of contractors are then if we were to hire our own FTE to actually have the staff on hands to be able to support our capital improvement projects?
That has not occurred in my time. And it would be an interesting exercise. However, I'm gonna hang a big asterisk off the end of my remark. And the asterisk says this, there are some types of construction work that we simply cannot do. Now, the Wainuski Outfall is a relatively simple project. So this is the type that we could do. But when it comes to geotechnical investigation and pouring cement underlays, pylons, major infrastructure construction projects, if we were to plus up three or four more blokes, we could do things like this, but we still would not be able to do those. So I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that a cost analysis would really pin out because it might be efficient for this job, but not for other classes of job.
If there's no more comments, would anybody like to make a motion? Go ahead, Mike.
I make a motion that we, um, go ahead and accept, uh, this resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine thirty-six.
Second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded that we approve, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four thirty-nine thirty-six. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Thank you, the motion passes.
Oh, I was opposing.
I'm sorry.
I was opposing.
Oh, okay. Did you get that? Thank you. Yes, sir.
I appreciate working for a council that does due diligence and looks at every penny as firmly as I do.
All right, the next, this is yours. Next item is gonna be the review and, thank you very much. The review and authorization funding for applications twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. That's cute.
Rachel, do I need the clicker or are you gonna click for me?
On, and I think it's the bottom arrow.
Okay. Good evening, council. I'm Leanne Wagner, one of the assistant planners for the city. Tonight I will be presenting the Affordable Housing Commission's recommendation for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund allocation for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Oops, I did something wrong already. Did I do it? Okay, awesome. Um, as you are all probably aware, the Newburgh Affordable Housing Trust Fund is a financial resource intended to support the development, preservation and rehabilitation of housing that is affordable to the lower income earners of Newburgh. This year, as in years past, the city has available funding for five programs. The Competitive Loan Program, the Rehabilitation Loan Program, the Time Sensitive Loan Program, the Time Sensitive Grant Program, and the Mobile Home Rehabilitation and Repair Program. This year, we received only one application for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund monies. And that was from the Newburgh Area Habitat for Humanity. Their project is for the College Street Homes. The project's scope is three new single-family homes at seven seventeen North College Street, near East Illinois Street. The goal of this project is to provide three newly constructed homes to first-time home buyers at affordable prices to low-income earners. The amount requested is twenty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty dollars from the Time Sensitive Grant category. And next, I wanted to briefly walk the council through the application process for this year's allocations. Uh, this year, we posted the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Notice of Funding Availability on January eleventh, twenty twenty-four. The deadline for applications was March the thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. And staff received Newburgh Area Habitat for Humanities application on March the thirteenth and completed the review of their materials on March the fourteenth. Their application was deemed complete and competitive by staff. On April twenty-fourth, the Affordable Housing Commission met and deliberated on the submitted applications for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and CET monies. By the end of the meeting, the commission had recommendations for city council. Which brings us to tonight's meeting agenda item. And from that meeting, the Affordable Housing Commission recommendation is that the Newburgh Area Habitat for Humanity be awarded the full allocation for the Time Sensitive Grant Program in the amount of twenty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. Therefore, staff is requesting the city council adopt resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine forty, awarding twenty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty dollars to the Newburgh Area Habitat for Humanity from the Newburgh Affordable Housing Trust Time Sensitive Grant Program. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Sarah? Would anybody like to make a motion? Peggy?
I move, we approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine forty. Twenty-nine forty, sorry.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-nine forty, uh, awarding Habitat for Humanity the entire twenty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty dollars from the Time Sensitive Grant Fund. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Now, we're looking at the, uh, uh, nine oh one South McKern Court Water Hardship Exemption. Welcome, Scott. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. Good evening, members of the city council, Scott Segal, Community Development Director. Um, before you this evening, as the mayor noted, is a request for water hardship exemption for providing what we call extraterritorial water service. In short, this means water service that goes to a property that's not inside the city, uh, which is contrary to code, but there are exceptions afforded through the municipal code and in situations where there's a hardship, and that's really what this is about. This is a request from the owner or from the estate, the owner of nine oh one South McKern Court, uh, who entered into a contract with the city in two thousand and seven for just this reason. This city, um, had worked with the then-owner, uh, following or in conjunction with ODOT's right-of-way acquisition process for the bypass. And you may have, if you've looked at the map and you can see where Springbrook winds around and this property abuts Springbrook to the south and McKern Court extends off, uh, on the east side of the property. And we'll have a map up here for you in a moment. You can see how the right-of-way acquisition that took place for the bypass uh, or for the road realignments in those area diminished the size of this property and others that are connected to it. Uh, there's a lot of background in the staff report and in the applicant's, uh, request. I'm not going to recount all of that. The applicant has a presentation tonight. Uh, they're here, of course, to, uh, present this. This is not a staff-initiated proposal. This comes from the landowner and the representatives. Uh, however, we have reviewed their request, um, based on the code and do have a recommendation for you. There are really two parts to the request. One is, uh, to allow, again, the extraterritorial water service to the property uh, for reasons that I'll discuss in just a moment. And secondly, they're asking the council to waive the system development charges that would be assessed for providing that water service. Now, I mentioned the property already has city water service, so why are they asking to do this again? The reason is, and they'll go into more detail in their presentation, is that when water service was provided to this property, it was required at that time that the water service meter be located inside the city or as close as possible to the city. And so that water meter and water service line were placed on the adjacent property to the north, which we refer to as Lot nine thousand. We refer to their lot as Lot nine thousand one, and which is not an ideal configuration. So there's an interest on the part of the property owner and their estate, um, as well as the city to have this rectified so that whether the tax lot nine thousand one is inside the city or outside the city, it's in, we believe it's in our interest and theirs to have this corrected so that there is a water service meter for their property. They have been paying for water service since two thousand and seven, or the property owners have been paying for water service. And that is the request. So when we evaluated that, we looked at the code and the code says that, again, uh, you must annex to the city if you were to receive water service or otherwise you can request a hardship exemption, which is what they've done. And well, we looked at them, we thought, well, why wouldn't they annex? Why wouldn't we just have them annex at this point? Because the contract that they entered into with the city in two thousand and seven says specifically that, um, at such time that the property, uh, I probably shouldn't paraphrase this, but it, it, it says if the property changes ownership or Monty Boland, who was the owner at that time, uh, no longer owns it or resides there, or if the property were to redevelop or develop again, uh, then they would be required, but it could be required to annex. It's, it's a consent to annex is what the city has in this contract. And so we looked at this and we said, well, what is the hardship? And they've, they've, uh, really their, their presentation, their argument focuses on at least two things. One is the hardship that resulted from the, uh, the right-of-way acquisition and the reconfiguration of the lot when, uh, the well that served this property had to be decommissioned, which resulted in this unusual service that they now have. Um, second hardship is that because the property, uh, is, they're in probate, the owner is deceased and the estate is having to sort out the sale and distribution of assets and how all that works, which of course is not the city's concern, uh, but it is one of the reasons for their request. And third, they've, um, have stated in their application, and I believe this may have been the, um, the concern back in two thousand and seven, is that, uh, annexing into the city would mean that the city zoning would be applied to their property. And the comprehensive plan for the city says that this property is to be designated for industrial use. Uh, it would be designated light industrial zoning. And they stated in their, in their application that this would force, this would force removal of the existing dwelling that's on the lot because it's contrary to the city zoning. Uh, there is, there's some nuances to that. Uh, the city does have provisions in its code that require a schedule for removal. The city does have provisions in its code that require a schedule for removal of non-conforming uses and development when properties annex into the city, which this would be a non-conforming use of residents in an industrial zone, but it does provide an exception for residences may continue indefinitely as not as legal non-conforming uses. So there is the ability to maintain that residential use, but I think that really the crux of their argument, which is for you to evaluate and judge, is that the city zoning would create, again, a hardship because reclassifying it from what is now the county zoning, which permits residential uses, to the city zoning of industrial, which does not permit residential uses, would diminish the value of the property. And they've presented evidence from a realtor that goes into that in more detail, but I think that's really sort of the crux of their argument. They, of course, can make their own, their own argument. When staff evaluated this, and based on the findings and the request for council action, we thought that had merit. So it's really for the council to consider, if you believe this, this is in fact a hardship, you could find that those criteria are met. The second part of the request, as I said, is to waive the system development charges that would be required for extending water service to tax lot 9001. There is a provision in the hardship exemption section of the code that affords really broad latitude to the council where you find that it's in the community's interest to waive system development charges in these instances of water service hardship. You can grant that waiver. From a staff perspective, we see that it is certainly in the property owner's interest. We didn't see evidence that it would be in the community interest or the general public interest, but that's for the council, that's your purview, and you can make that determination. So the fiscal impact, so in conclusion, based on the analysis, we find the application meets the criteria for water service hardship exemption, and we did not find it met criteria for waiver of system development charges. If the council agrees with the applicant, you would make a motion directing staff to prepare a resolution rescinding and replacing the prior Resolution 2007-2700 and authorizing a new contract for extraterritorial water service and a consent to annexation. The new agreement would, of course, incorporate the standard conditions in the code that spell out the situations in which annexation could be required. So if the, again, if the property were to develop or redevelop, or there were a change of use or an expansion to the residential development on the lot, those would all be reasons for requiring annexation. Let's see, so, and then we would return with a resolution, a draft resolution for council action, and the staff report says August 4 or later. It would in fact be August 19 or later, based on our schedule. The fiscal impact, if the hardship exception is approved in Lot 1901, remains outside the city limits. The city would forego property tax revenue that it would otherwise receive with annexation. We've estimated that based on 2023 assessed value of $211,000 approximately, that the city property tax would be a little over $600 a year. So there's, you know, there is a consequence in allowing the property to remain outside the city and also receive water service. And that concludes the staff report. Oh, the system development charges, we've estimated if the water services connection is made, the SDCs for water would be, under the current rate model, would be $7,846 and change. And that concludes the staff report. If you have any questions?
No, I'm assuming that the applicant is going to make a presentation. So anybody have questions for Scott specifically?
Mike? So the SDC charge, is that based on the revised SDCs that we did earlier this year? It came effective April 1st?
Yes, Councilman McBride, it is, and it's only for water. So of course, we wouldn't assess SDCs for other purposes.
Just to make sure I'm clear, Scott, it's, the original annexation agreement was set up in 2007, so they've been getting water from the city since then, and of course, not being in the limits, we don't collect any property taxes.
That's correct, Councilor Kilburg.
For seven years.
And from, my understanding from engineering is that they're not connected to city sewer, so that's not, they have a septic system. So again, if they were to develop or redevelop, the likelihood is that, you know, they would have to connect a sewer as well as, you know, annex into the city, so. Thank you.
Hold on, Scott, I have one more question. When somebody is in a situation where they're an island inside the city, they don't belong to the city, they're getting water service only, or the municipal services bill has several other fees on it, which fees does this property currently pay on the water services bill?
None, according to our finance group.
You said none, so all they pay is the water portion?
Yeah, they don't pay any of the extra, like, public safety fee or any of those if you live outside the city limits.
And they also have not been paying them since 2007, when they first made this agreement. Robin?
Hi, Scott, thank you. I think I asked this before, but if we were to vote for them to annex, what's the cost associated with that, and what is the time, timeframe on that?
Oh, you should ask. I'm sorry, I'm not prepared to answer that, but I can provide, while they're presenting, I can look that up and perhaps respond. I do have to make a couple of other comments about the staff report. There were some comments in the report about when Lot 1901 was divided from 1900, and it's not correct to say that that happened around the time that the ODOT process was underway. We found after publication that that happened much earlier, so that there wasn't a connection between that land division and the right-of-way acquisition, but it's not really material to their request. So I just, I just wanted to correct that, and let's see, I think there might have been one other point, but it's eluding me, and I'm sure the applicant will point it out if I'd misspoke in any way. Thank you.
Strictly a comment, Scott, I found it really helpful how you italicized the criteria and then had the staff comments following each one. That was easier to understand.
Thank you for the feedback.
So I see Mr. Gunn is here, representing, I'm sure, the owners. Whoever's going to speak, come on up.
Is it a clicker? We don't need to, your capable city clerk just told me I don't need to use that.
All right, thank you.
You don't want a clicker, or do you? No. Masters in computer science, but don't know anything about that. Okay, thank you, Mayor. My name is Mike Gunn. I'm an attorney, been in front of the council many, many times as an attorney, not this council, though. I took a 16-year hiatus from retirement, got back into this business last September, so this is my first time in front of the council as an attorney. This lady here is my right-hand person, her name's Kathy Walker, she's my paralegal. She keeps me squared away most of the time. I'm here to represent, on a limited basis, the estate of Monty Boland. The, let me introduce, the gentleman right here in the kind of a check shirt is Matt Boland, that's the personal representative of the estate, is one of Monty Boland's sons. The other lady right there is Christina Scott, she goes by Tina. They're the owners of the adjacent property here, or LLC is. Let me first state that this is not
Before you go on, when you say the adjacent, are you talking about 1900 or 1800?
No, let me, let me point out if I can up here.
Okay.
I don't want to use that
Is it lot 1800 or 1900?
If you, okay, if you look at the right hand, that's, that's the aerial of these properties right now, okay? 1800 is Swanger's property. That's outside the city limits. 1900, which is kind of the trapezoidal-shaped one, that's owned by ACG Concrete LLC. Thank you, Mayor, or thank you, Mr. Worthy. The, I'll let him run the clicker, he's much better than me. The 1900, previous to, a month ago, was owned by a concrete company called DMR Concrete Inc. They're the owners of that also. That was previously owned, DMR was previously owned by Monty Boland. Okay? Immediately to the south is 1901. That is the subject property we're talking about here. That is outside the city limits. If you see that X up there where it says meter on 1900, they're up in the, right there, very good, thank you. That's where the water meter is. That water meter feeds both properties, 1900 and 1901. Now, I'm the first, I will be the first person to tell you that this is not a normal hardship water application. Normally, what happens is that you have some, like, Monty Boland, you have somebody that comes that's outside the city limits, that has no water or poor water, whatever, service, and they make an application to the city for a hardship application, and they have to satisfy the ordinance requirements, which are under 13.15.120, to see if they can gain, you know, if they can satisfy those. This is not the case here. This is not a standard. If you look at the, if you look at the, the slide, I guess, the map at the left, this was taken off the comprehensive plan back prior to 2005, okay? You see where it says the yellow ODOT right-of-way, and the red, it's hard to read the red, this is drawn, okay? Roger Grahn, or entities owned by him, controlled by him, owned what was called Tax Lot 1802 and Tax Lot 1900, which encompassed together about 2.41 acres, okay? The green part on there is Boland's property there. On the red, the red is now what is basically Tax Lot 1900. Now, there's, there, I've got a myriad of documents, which I apologize for the length of, in the, as exhibits in the hardship application, but they're, they serve a twofold purpose. Number one, I have to make a record of this application. Number two, it's important, I think, for the council to understand how all this happened, how these properties used to be, what the bypass, I'll call it the bypass, it was part of the bypass, what effect the bypass had on these properties, and what they are now. Now, what triggered all this is you see up there in the yellow part, now, I'm going to take you back to pre-2005, actually, in 1997. I didn't intend to go into a lot of the history, and I don't, but I want to summarize just so you can understand how we got to where we are today. In 1997, Grahn sold Tax Lot 1901 to Monty Boland individually. Monty Boland took up residence there and lived there until he passed away in January this year. Okay. Now, we go forward to about 2004. In 2004, Grahn and Monty Boland, Grahn owns 1802 and 1900, Monty Boland's owned, Monty Boland owns 1901. They apply for annexation into the city, okay? Now, at the time, back at that point in time, you had, you had, by legislate, by state law, you had to get, even if it passed the city council, you had to get a vote of the people for annexation. Counselor Wheatley asked a question there. I believe it's the case now that Newburgh is exempt from that as far as, if, under certain circumstances, the city council's vote is final as far as an annexation is concerned. You were asking about the time period. Time period is still months. Many, many, many dollars have to be expended on an annexation, attorney fees and costs. You just, the thing is, you don't have to, you don't have to go to the vote of the people under certain circumstances. So at that point in time, they're both applying for annexation. Monty Boland suddenly realizes that, wait a minute, if I get annexed, I'm not going to be able to live on that property for very long. Now, I grant it, there may be, there may be a non-conforming use out on that, but it's my understanding, under most circumstances, you try to improve a property with a non-conforming use, et cetera, and it's not in a residential zone, you're not going to be able to do that because it's, obviously residences aren't allowed in an industrial zone, and that property is comp plan designated industrial. So Monty Boland withdraws his application for annexation. Now, it sails through the city council, it goes to the vote of the people, and it passes. Grahn's property is then annexed into the city, 1802 and 1900. 1802 was the big part of it, 1900 was just a sliver, and because 1900 is less than the lot size, they're combined into one tax lot, 1900. This is in 2004, early 2005. Now, here's the big intervening action, okay? Condemnation on ODOT, okay? The bypass, I handled a ton of those condemnation cases, didn't handle this one. 2005, ODOT files condemnation against Grahn and Monty Boland, and the well up there in the yellow, that well provided water to Boland's property, okay? Now, I was going to have the title company do me a title search, they're going to charge me a bunch of money to find out when 1900 and 1901 actually partitioned off of there because I believe, and I, but I don't know for a fact, at one point in time, they were under a common ownership, because normally you don't have a well on somebody else's property that's providing water to you on another property. But at any rate, that was the deal. That was an oral agreement for X amount of time, I believe, I believe it was in 2004, 2005, they actually record an easement, okay? Granting, because the line's going over 1802, 1900, at that point, they record an easement so that Monty Boland has a record interest to at least get watered his property. Condemnation comes through, okay? They go in 2007, they go into a mediation, Grahn, Monty Boland, the state of Oregon, they resolve the situation. Bottom line, the resolution is this: the access is gone from Springbrook Road to access 1802 and 1900. ODOT takes it, okay? They take two Swanger's accesses on 1800, and I'm saying this anecdotally so you get a picture of all the, what's happened then. ODOT gives Swanger 1800 and 1900 a 25-foot access permit, it doesn't get recorded until 2018, but they give it to them in 2008, 2009, and you see the easement across the Eastman area? We don't really have a recorded easement, we're dealing with that with Swanger's heirs, but at any rate, that's the access for both 1800 and 1900. 1900 to access their property has to go over Swanger's property, and we think we've got a prescriptive easement, but at any rate, they don't have a direct access to Springbrook Road. ODOT never gave it to them, and I doubt if they could ever get one because of the site distance, et cetera, et cetera. But at any rate, the well goes away, that's part of the, that's part of the condemnation. ODOT took, that property started out at 2.41 acres, ODOT took all but, that property is now .33 acres, okay? So you can do the math. They took two acres of that property, okay? Two-plus acres. So the end result is Monty Boland's stuck, they're taking the well, he got no water, okay? So that leads up to 2007, when Grahn, Grahn kind of was the, I won't say mastermind, that's probably not the right word, but he was the lead force on all this. He applies, and Monty Boland signs his acknowledging, he applies for a hardship water for 1901 with the city, okay, because he had no well. That? Yes, sir? Well, not anymore. Around up there, yeah, somewhere in there, yeah. That well was decommissioned by ODOT immediately after that 2007 mediation, because with the condemnation, they can take possession of the property as long as they pay the money in the court as soon as they file the lawsuit, which was in 2005. But at any rate, the well's gone, it's decommissioned, yes. So the hardship application comes before the city, excuse me, the city council then, and it's approved. And basically, the ordinance was pretty much the same back then as it is now. And it's approved. And basically, the ordinance was pretty much the same back then as it is now. I noticed in twenty nine, twenty two, your ordinance last, but you've, you've kind of tweaked it a little, but that ordinance isn't, isn't, according to Mr. Siegel's, not in effect till the seventeenth of July. But at any rate, the city council approves the application with obvious conditions, okay? You, and, and Mr. Siegel, who I, I want, I, I meant to compliment, I want to compliment him on his ability to try to work with us to find a solution on this. Because this is, like I said, this is not a normal situation. So, I wanted to compliment Mr. Siegel on that. At any rate, one of the conditions is, you have, there's various ones, but one of them is you're going to have to sign an extra, called an extraterritorial agreement that's going to get recorded against the land that runs with the land that basically is there ad infinitum. So, one of the conditions in that agreement is the applicant, who is Monty Boland, agrees, the landowner, agrees that if such time, there's going to be certain triggering events that will cause a consent to the annexation, okay? Now, I'm not going to sit here and say Monty Boland didn't know what he was doing. I have no idea. Never met that. One of the Bolands I never met. But the, the point being that between the, the triggering events were that if he sold that property or failed to live on that property, uh, those, there were other events, change of use, development, et cetera. But those two triggering events would trigger a consent to annexation. So, that was in two thousand seven. The application that Gron submitted, there's a paragraph on there that says, and this is where the abnormality really comes in. There's a paragraph that says, well, this application is for a meter, three quarter inch lateral with a three quarter inch meter to be placed on, not on Boland's property where you would normally place it if you're going to get a hardship, okay? But on Tax Lot nineteen hundred, whom I intend to convey to DMR Concrete Inc. at some point in time in the future because Monty Boland owns it. And that meter is going to provide service to both properties right on the application, okay? Now, I think that probably every, the mayor and probably every council person will say, that's not a normal hardship application. You don't usually come in and say, I'm, I, I want an application for water service to a property outside the city. I'm going to put the meter on a property inside the city. And by the way, this is going to be a shared meter that's going to provide service to property inside the city and property outside the city. Okay? That's what that application said. That's what the city council approved. And that's what was installed, okay? That meter was installed on Tax Lot nineteen hundred. And the Monty Boland paid SDCs on that. That was part of the agreement, obviously. He paid SDCs, he paid all the costs of the installation, et cetera. And for a while, the bill was sent to Gron. Then, for some reason, the extraterritorial agreement was not recorded until, this, this agreement was entered into in February of two thousand seven. It was never recorded until two thousand ten. Why? I don't know. City didn't record it till then. In twenty ten, Monty Boland, or excuse me, Gron sold Tax Lot nineteen hundred to DMR Concrete Inc. At that point in time, the bill started going to Monty Boland, okay? So, there's been, there's only been one bill ever per month. And it's been, well, for the last fourteen years, it's been to nineteen oh one. One bill. The water usage on Tax Lot nineteen hundred is minimal. The, these people right here, they use it to store concrete. They have a concrete business. They use to store concrete trucks and trailers, et cetera. I mean, believe me, there's not much you can do on that thirty-three hundredths of an acre. There's one outbuilding, but they, they, they occasionally use water to wash. There's no, there's no sanitary facilities there in terms of toilet or anything, the bathroom facilities. They use, they use it to wash the trailers, et cetera. The, the vast bulk of that water is used for residential purposes for Tax Lot nineteen oh one. Has been since day one, which had been March of twenty oh seven. So, I just, I want, hopefully that gives you an idea. I want you to, I want to emphasize a couple of things. Monty Boland paid SDCs, albeit back in twenty oh seven. He paid the SDCs since February of twenty seven, twenty oh seven, that meter has been servicing both properties, okay? And now, that brings us up to now. What are we going to do now? He's dead, okay? According to the agreement, if you look at a literal interpretation, I suppose you've, you've got a pretty good argument. You've got a consent to annex, okay? We're obviously, our application is a two-stage application. The first stage is we're asking for a joint rescission of that agreement. And as you know, as Mr. Taylor will tell you, rescission is basically, you have a paper agreement, it's torn up. It's, it's like you're rescinding it. Now, why are we doing that? Okay? If we have to annex that, we, if we have to annex that property, that's coming in as light industrial, okay? Uh, it's sixty-eight hundredths of an acre. You see, it's got a bar, it's got an outbuilding, it's got a residence on it. The the, the, we could annex that. We could. I mean, we'd still have to come through the council and the application. The application fees and the attorney fees and the costs are going to be, are, are going to be very expensive. It also takes months. I forgot, I neglected to say one thing. Monty Boland borrowed on a reverse mortgage on that property. Now, that's not your fault. Anybody's, that was his own volition, okay? For those of you who, who aren't aware, reverse mortgage, when the borrower dies, it invokes the due on sale clause. There's other things that do it, but for sure, when you die, the due on sale clause is invoked. That mortgage is due and payable. It's a trust deed, but it's, the note's due and payable. Month or so ago, it was two hundred, in a neighborhood of two hundred thousand dollars. He died in January. I've dealt with a lot of reverse mortgage companies before. Usually, as long as you're showing some kind of good faith efforts to try to pay that off, i.e. sell the property or whatever, they will cut you a year's worth of slack on that thing and won't foreclose on it for a year. Well, we're six months into the year at this point in time. The estate has no liquidity, no money, zero. Monty Boland didn't have any money. Oh, he had a few hundred bucks, but the, the the asset of that estate is the real property. That real property has to be sold to pay the debts of the estate. Matt and Tina have been fronting the debts of the estate because there's no money in the estate to pay those. Now, we basically had three options once he passed away as to how to deal with this extraterritorial contract that says, you know, you got to consent to annex. First option is you do it, coming in as industrial property, et cetera. Well, we have to pay the fees for that, for the annexation. That's obviously a, a pretty good sized expense. But if you look at the, the value of this property as industrial property inside the city limits, and Diana Cooper did a pretty good analysis of what the value of this property is. Two hundred and twenty, two, two hundred twenty, let's say two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, okay? At the most, because this is not your normal type industrial property where you see is ready for a development. This is, and this property, if it's, if it's allowed to stay in the county as residential property, is worth somewhere in the neighborhood of six hundred thousand dollars, although it's listed higher than that and they haven't, it's, they haven't had any bites on it, so that might, that might be a, an optimistic amount. But it's worth, I can tell you, it's worth more money in the county than the city, which is not, you know, not your, not your problem to cer- to certain extent. We could, we could try to annex that. Is there residential property? We'd have to get a comp plan amendment for residential. There again, that's going to take a considerable period of time. Not only the annexation, we got to apply for a zone change and a comp plan amendment. It's, it's highly doubtful if the council would ever approve that. Even if you did, it's even more doubtful that it would, that it would withstand an appeal at Luba. And I've done a lot of Luba appeals and that, I, I don't, I don't see that thing would do that. So, the, that leaves us to our, our last choice that is, that is, you know, we're, we're applying for this joint rescission because if that property is sold, well, well, Matt and Tina owned nineteen, they still do. Well, they, well, their entity owns nineteen hundred and Monty Boland owned nineteen oh one. There weren't any problems about a shared meter, okay? Now, the problem is that somebody else is going to own nineteen oh one, hopefully, when it's sold. And they don't want to, for valid reasons, they don't want to deal, have to deal with an unknown quantity or person out there on a shared meter with a meter that's on their property. And the city really doesn't like this shared meter situation either, even though it was approved by the city a long time ago. So, that leaves us to our application, which is a joint rescission, basically to get rid of that agreement. And the second part of that application is to install a new meter on nineteen oh one. It'd be a new lateral off of McCurn Court. There's plenty of capacity in the main there. A new lateral and a new meter on nineteen oh one, disconnect the service off of the meter on nineteen oh one that, excuse me, that's on nineteen hundred that serves nineteen oh one. So, nineteen hundred is still, is going to, the end result's going to be that meter is going to remain on nineteen hundred, just serve nineteen hundred. Nineteen hundred is going to get their own bill every month, which they don't knew now. The city's going to get revenue, albeit not a lot, but the city's going to get a minimum bill revenue each month from nineteen hundred that they don't get now. And nineteen oh one is going to have their own meter. Now, we're fully aware, we got to pay the cost on that. Uh, I say we, you know who I'm talking about here. But that, that's basically the only alternative. They have to pay the engineering, the, the permit, the installation, all that. Disconnection, et cetera. Now, that is, that's the crux of the second part of that application. Obviously, we can't get a meter there without a hardship application. It's impossible. I don't, I don't think annexation is really in the, in the cards from the city standpoint. I know the city wants industrial property. If you look at the statistics that I included off the comp plan, the city has an overage surplusage of less than twenty acre property in the, the city. You're, you're really looking at something five acres and more according to the comp plan, realistically, what you're looking for industrial. You need big industrial, twenty plus acres, et cetera. This is a, I'm not trying to be cynical. This is a small pea in a pod as far as industrial property, it being able to be developed, which would help the city. Now, obviously, you're going to lose some property tax revenue. If it's not annexed, you don't have it now. You'd be, you'd lose that on a fiscal impact. That would, I use five bucks a thousand, which is the max it can be taxed. That's not taxed. How much is taxed? Most of that's going to be offset by the, the revenue you're going to gain from the, the new bill. But here, here's the most important point that I really want to emphasize. And I, I, I exhaustively discussed that in the application. It's our position that if you approve this and a new meter, approve a new meter being installed there, it's not like the situation when Monty Boland got approval. There, obviously, there was a usage of water. There was a, there was a usage of water of the city, city's water that was never there before, okay? He got a meter. This situation here, there's going to be zero usage, increased burden on the city. Because whether you put, whether you put a new meter on nineteen oh one or not, if you didn't, it's, if you didn't have a new meter there, the same amount of water is going to be coming through nineteen hundred and feeding both properties, okay? Now, you're going to have a separate meter on nineteen hundred that's going to use, nineteen hundred isn't going to use any more water than it is now. Nineteen oh one's not going to use any more water than it is now. The only difference is you've got two meters, okay? Versus one. So, this, that is why this is not a normal application, okay? And I, and I, I appreciate the counselor and the mayor's comments up there and questions to start out with, but we're not really asking something for nothing here. If, if this was a normal situation, I wouldn't be asking for a waiver or an exemption of these SDC charges. Because there'd be no way that I could sit here and justify that to you people, okay? This is not a normal situation. SDCs have been paid, albeit for one meter. But the, uh, there's not going to be any additional flow here. Now, the, we believe as far as the, as far as the criteria for the hardship, it's, let's set aside the SDCs for one minute here. As far as the criteria for the hardship, I, I believe we showed the criteria because annexation is not practical in this situation. Now, I know that other people may disagree, but we have to, we have to rescind this first agreement to get anywhere, okay? We actually couldn't modify it, but that doesn't make any sense. It's easier, it makes more sense to rescind that, replace it with a new agreement. Now, what we're asking for in this new agreement is that annexation not be triggered by a change of ownership or the death of an owner, et cetera. And for the reason that, that's the boat we're in right now, okay? If, if you approve this hardship application and you required us to agree to the same conditions that Monty Boland agreed to, that said, annexation is going to be, consent to annexation is going to be triggered by the owner selling the property or the owner moving from the property, et cetera. It's no different than we are now. Nobody's going to buy this property with that condition on there. If, if, if they're going to be forced the minute they move from that property or sell it to annex, who, who's going to buy it from them? So, we fully understand the costs involved in this. But what we're requesting is that the annexation only be triggered by, assuming you approved this, the, the required consent to annexation for nineteen oh one only be triggered by a change of usage of the property, residential to something else or development, which is probably impossible. It's sixty-eight hundredths of an acre in the county and it's VLDR. Uh, but at any rate, it can't be triggered by a sale of that property or the owner moving from that property or something along those lines because otherwise, that's of no benefit to anybody on that. That's just, that's what we are now, where we are now. Now, now, if I may, I, I, I want to, I respectfully say that I, I do not agree with Mr. Siegel on one aspect of this request for council action staff report, however you want to say it. And it relates to on page five, he has a statement that the applicant basically has not met the criteria for a waiver. Now, if I may, on, on your ordinances, and as I said, the the ordinances as far as, as twenty nine, twenty two are not, they're not in effect right at the present time, but the ordinance for the thirteen oh five oh two oh has several exceptions on there, or excuse me, thirteen oh five, one oh two oh now is has, it deals with exemptions and waivers. And I, I, I was remiss, that was my fault on not including the exemption part here. I would, I would draw, and this is, this is thirteen point oh five point one two oh. It's what is in effect right now. And it doesn't matter if it was, if we were here after July seventeenth, it'd be the same thing. It's a different numbering. Subparagraph C says, "An alteration, addition, replacement, or change in use that does not increase the parcels or structures used of a public improvement facility are exempt from all portions of the system development charge." Now, I would submit that assuming you agree with what I said about assuming you agree with what I said about no change in usage of the water, no increase, that this would apply. System development charges, and I was around when, practicing law, when they came into effect in the nineties, were set up to require a developer, builder, whoever that built a structure or remodeled a structure, upsizing it, to pay for their portion of the increased burden on the city services in the future. Whether it be sewer, water, transportation, whatever. That's the purpose of a system development charge. And if we were, if we, if, if there was no meter there right now, clearly there'd be a new meter there and we would have to pay the SDCs because we're gonna burden the city because we're gonna get used water that wasn't used before. In this case right here, I would submit this exemption, and there's a difference between an exemption and a waiver. An exemption means you don't pay it at all. It's not even applicable. I would submit this, this one thirteen oh five one twenty C applies. Now, you may not agree with me. If you don't agree with me, obviously, the, that's, there's, there's the, the exception, well, let me back up a second. Subparagraph E says, "Except as provided in subsection D." There's no waiver of system development charge. That's a waiver. You don't agree with me on the exemption. That basically says there's one situation that you can get a waiver on system development charges if it's a normal type application. And that's, can't be, it can be up to two moderate or low income developments, okay? But you go to the, you go to the hardship ordinance, which is thirteen one fifty, or excuse me, thirteen point one five point one two oh has various sections to it, okay? And this was, this was actually, your, your code book that's on, online right now has got these changes in it. Because you can see the lines on there. I pulled this off of there today. But at any rate, thirteen point one five point one two oh D sub five. Now, we're getting to the nitty gritty. It says, "The city council may waive all or any portion of the city's system development charges as it feels is in the best interest of the city." Okay? Now, that is a pretty subjective grant of authority to the city council. And, and we're talking waivers now. We're not talking exemptions. This is where you've made a determination there's SDCs that are owed. I would submit that these two ordinances are in direct conflict with each other. They're mutually exclusive. And if the city council really wanted only to be one time ever under one condition, could you ever waive an SDC? They would have so, certainly said so in the one that says, "Except as provided in subsection D." And the reason they didn't, in my opinion, is because they wanted the city council to have the flexibility to look at a hardship application with the facts of that hardship application and decide. And there's no criteria listed here. It's basically what you feel is in the best interest of the city. And that always isn't a dollar and cent situation. Granted, Mr. Siegel said, you know what? If you grant that, you're going to forgo seventy eight hundred and some odd dollars in system development charges. There's no doubt about that. But I would state that's not the only thing you should look at. And that's why I'm back to my original point. This is not a standard hardship application. This is a situation where there've been SDCs that were paid already, albeit one meter. There's not gonna be any increase in the flow, the usage of that water to burden the city. Clearly, these people behind me here realize that at some point in time when nineteen hundred is developed, based upon what the development plan is, et cetera, it's, it will probably require, may, I shouldn't say probably, may require a new lateral, an upsized lateral. Certainly, if it does that, it's gonna require an upsized meter from what's there now. On industrial commercials, development, the, uh, SDCs are based on what your development is, what your flow's gonna be. It's not just a straight X amount for a single family residence. So it's not that the city's never gonna connect, correct, collect SDCs. It's just that, at this point in time, they're gonna have to pay SDCs when they develop that property, no doubt about it. At this point in time, I would say that one of the things that's in the best, excuse me, in the best interest of the city is how the city treats, how the city handles each situation with each applicant, et cetera. In this situation right here, I would say, I would submit that it's in the best interest of the city to waive the, well, first of all, I don't think, I think the exemption is, gets us out of the thing altogether. But if you don't agree with me, is to waive these SDCs because that's the right thing to do. We're not, we're not getting something for nothing. I mean, like I said, if I, if this was a situation that was a normal, I wouldn't be here. Now, you, I'm, I'm supposing that you're gonna think about, maybe ask Ms. Taylor, don't know. I would hope that she would agree with me that you have to look at every one of these things, it's like a land use case on its own. On its own facts, you obviously have to satisfy the ordinance, but it's on its own set of facts. And you may be worried about if you're gonna set a precedence on this. And, and I would say that this, I don't have all, I don't have any of the app, I don't have any knowledge as to how many. I know of several, how many hardship applications the city has granted in the last twenty years? I know of a couple because they were ex clients of mine that got those. I would, I would venture to say that the city has never had this situation come up before where you had a meter authorized, actually required by the city, a shared meter where the SDC's paid meter servicing two properties. I would, I would bet that the city is not gonna have this situation come up again. Uh, so what I'm saying is that if you grant this application as we've, as we've requested, you know, I'm not your attorney, I can't advise you, but I would, I would say that there's no precedent set because this is a set of facts that stands on itself, excuse me, stands on its own that hasn't ever come before you before. So in closing, I think we've met our burden. Hopefully, you will, uh, hopefully you will agree. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, whoever has any questions for me. I think, see, Councilwoman's chomping at the bit there, it looks like.
Well, we're gonna.
Oh, no, okay.
Excuse me, we're gonna take you up on that. I, I suspected we were gonna be shorter than this. I, I apologize, my bad. I know attorneys are people that write a hundred page document and call it a brief. So that being said, let's take a five or ten minute break, uh, and we'll come back and then we'll resume where we are now. All right, if we can, let's go ahead and continue where we left off. Thank you very much. Before we get too far into this, I would like to disclose, in my construction work, I framed houses. I probably have framed a house on top of a foundation that, that your company, one of your companies had built before. Uh, we've met a time or two. I don't think we've ever had a financial transaction at all, so I guess, and want everybody to know that I'm not sure. So anyway, who has questions for Mr. Stone?
So I, you might have mentioned this earlier and I just didn't catch it. But why would you not want to, why would they not want to annex this property in? Get it changed to residential? It's worth more money. You can sell a bunch of, not a bunch, you could put several homes on there. Why not do that and just be done with it? Or is it because, is the part that you're gonna sell or that? Never mind, that would not work. Okay, just answer the first question, please.
Okay, I'll, let me, let me take a stab at it, okay? If you look at the, let me, let me, first of all, let me say this. From a land use, from a land use standpoint, this, this property is designated, comp plan designated as, as industrial, okay? It cannot come in as residential property unless, unless the applicant contemporaneously with the annexation, shouldn't say contemporaneously, it, the applicant has to file for a comp plan amendment to residential, okay? Same time, you've got to file for a zone change from industrial to residential. All this is contingent on it being annexed, okay? I'm not sure, well, first of all, the comp plan amendment is gonna be a hurdle that probably can't be overcome. Okay, because you've got some, some industrial property around there. I mean, changing, I, I've done comp plan amendments in the past. They're very difficult to do. Sometimes you have to take goal exceptions, et cetera. That's the biggest hurdle. It probably, the odds, the odds are probably ninety plus that it's not gonna get approved. And probably ninety nine percent, if it does get approved, it's not gonna withstand an appeal at Luba, okay? So that's the, that's the primary reason. And it's, and it, it's not, it's, it's not as worth as much as people would think. Because if you look at the development potential on that, I mean, if that was zone residential, you got sixty eight hundreds of an acre. You got a house that's on there. If you could take the barn down, assuming this was already residential. It's already residential. You got, you gotta put the infrastructure in there, okay? The road, the streets, the sewer, et cetera. So it's not, you're gonna make a real big killing on it, the, uh, but the biggest problem is the land use. It's probably not gonna be able to be done. Or if it is, you can't get it, can't withstand an appeal at Luba. It's better, it's better as V L D R outside the county, who's got a residence on it.
So just a follow up, in the material that I read through, you're, it looks like you're asking to, uh, go a, a, a size bigger, up to a one inch?
No.
I thought.
No. A three, I'm not the city engineer by any stretch. Mr. Siegel can, can supplement what I'm gonna say. We, originally, we had conversations with, it was a, it was a Zoom call with him and Mr. Music, the city engineer and me. And no, it's, it's, it's a three quarter inch now. It's gonna be a three quarter lateral and a three quarter meter will serve a single family residence.
Yeah, I guess maybe this is a question for Katie. If, if we didn't annex them, they're already paying water, could we, could they pay some of the other line items on the bill? Could we compel them to do that or is that not legal unless you're in the limits?
Uh, might be an attorney question. I know we have, it's part of our code, I think, that if you live outside city limits, you don't pay some of these extra fees. So that, I'm not sure.
May I comment on Ms. Please, I know, I mean, nineteen hundred is.
I'm sorry, that, I was gonna acknowledge, uh, Will Worthy, please.
Okay, sorry. Thanks, Honorable Mayor. I mean, I just think as a matter of, of practical concern, for, in terms of dispatch charging and things related to police services, it, they would be within the sheriff's jurisdiction, so it would be, it, it would be odd if we charged them for, for that when they're not directly in our jurisdiction.
Uh, okay, so my other question is regarding the SDC waiver. So you say that there's not gonna be any more use. But they're using that, they're using their barn or the shed for their business where the water meter currently is. But if you do sell it, I mean, there was a one man living on that, but are you saying, let's say a family of six moves into that home and does use considerable more water, are you still saying that there's no change?
Well, counsel, or clearly, I, I would say you're, that's a, that's a hypothetical. Monty Boland had a companion that lived there with him. Your SDC structure doesn't doesn't, uh, it's based upon a single family dwelling, okay? And if you have one person living there versus six people living there, you pay, you're paying the same SDC for the water. You're asking a hypothetical, what if, yeah, if six people live there, I suppose, that they're gonna use probably more water, but you're, that, that is an assumption based upon something that neither of us know and, and is not gonna have any effect on an SDC charge to start out with anyway. If this was, if this was a, the normal circumstance, he comes in, he doesn't have any water, he's gonna pay an SDC charge based upon that single family dwelling. There isn't gonna be any more usage based upon what's being used right now unless, yeah, unless there's a lot more people that move in there, but I don't think you can base a decision based on that. That's, that's an assumption you're making.
I, I did look up where the one inch figure came from. And what it was, was in, uh, uh, Scott's analysis, he said that normally if a meter served two residences, that would be a one inch, one inch meter. In this case, it's going to be two separate meters, each serving one property, which would only be a three quarter inch meter. Go ahead, Scott.
Mr. Mayor, and that, uh, so the standard meter or standard meter size is minimum three quarter inch. But according to city engineering staff, there are situations where a one inch meter can handle two dwellings. So it's, that's not the conventional approach, but notwithstanding that, the existing meter is a three quarter inch, so it's not sized for two, for two dwellings or two uses.
Well, I have a question, but it's actually for our attorney. Um, so if that's appropriate now. What is your take on Mr. Gunn's assertion that this would be exempt anyway from the SDC charges?
Yeah, Scott and I have talked about that a little bit more, and I think Scott is in a better position to explain um, the, the nuances of that particular example.
Yeah, thank you, Chrissy. Happy to do that. Counselor Kilburg, the, uh, so there are really two sort of, two decision points here, I think, or, or determinations. One is whether this would be exempt from system development charges under Newberg Code thirteen oh five one two oh C. And that, I believe, is the section that Mr. Gunn referred to for exemptions. And that allows exemptions where an existing use or an alteration, addition, replacement, or a change of use does not increase the parcels or structures used at public facility, um, of the public facility. And then the second argument, I think, is that perhaps, um, that this would be a hardship that the council would waive the fees altogether. So I think you really need to reach the first question, you need to answer the first question. And so SDCs are, uh, charges that ensure that, or, or ensure that as we grow, we're developing the system and we're sizing our pipes and our treatment plan and everything else accordingly. And so, and I've heard, uh, your esteemed city attorney, James, is, is, uh, use the metaphor of, you know, sort of paying it forward, like when you're in line at the coffee shop and someone, you know, pays for the person behind them. And that's what SDCs are, are doing. And so it's not really about how many people are occupying a house or how much water is coming out of the, uh, through the meter at a particular point in time. It's really about sizing our system appropriately based on the public facility master plans. And so looking at what currently exists with a three quarter inch meter for, uh, really two parcels, two, two uses, that that is substandard. And so, uh, the request to add a second meter and, in order to serve a lot nineteen oh one exclusively is really adding capacity. It's adding the capacity for more water service to serve both of those lots. And so that is not an alteration or addition or replacement or a change to an existing use. That's, that's putting in additional capacity to serve an existing use. And so that's how, that's where, how we find that it's not really subject to this exemption. If there were a, a one inch meter there, according to engineering staff, that could potentially serve two uses, but it really depends on the use. If it's industrial, there could be a higher water demand. If it's residential, if it's multi-family residential, there could be a higher water demand. So that's, uh, that's how we interpreted this.
So this is one of the, one of the issues that is dear to me. Because I like fairness. I like everybody be treated the same. And when we raise And when we raise, uh, the, uh, what do we call it, the sea, uh, the transportation money that's on our water bill? Tough, thank you. When we raise that fee, that means every little old lady in town has to pay it. In this case, we have a commercial building and a residence that are not paying it. So, that, that's my baseline. I, I don't like these islands, we have several of them. If Russ was here, he could get, tell me the number. Do you happen to remember, Will? Twenty-something?
It was, I don't remember the exact number, but it was something in the low twenties of small islands.
So, it's a very small number of properties in our city. Some of them inside the city limits, some of them, like the one property outside of city limits, that don't pay the, those bills. And I would like to see us solve, rectify that problem. So, that's, that's where I'm starting here. Back in two thousand seven, the city made an agreement, gave them this, this hardship. The well that they were hooked up to at the time was non-potable. So, it wasn't a legal well for them to use anyway. They had to get this or get annexed. And, uh, this person chose not to annex, and the city said, okay, I'll tell you what. When you move off the property, you have to annex it. I don't believe for a minute that any attorney that would have approved that document would have not thought, oh, gosh, what if the guy dies? I mean, to me, it's plainly, somebody passes away, he has left the property. I don't see where that's an exception. I, I don't, you know, literal, okay, I mean, you're, I'm sure you're a good attorney there. The conditions, the owner's obligations, as the document, um, was written, the owner hereby agrees to pay all required system development charges prior to connecting. Now, if that happened, and, and it shouldn't be too hard to determine that, then that belonged to the other lot, which at the time may have had common ownership, although there's, depending on which document you read, it looks like that ownership changed on this property a couple of times during the last, between two thousand seven and now, two different entities, which also, uh, according to the owner's obligations, would have required that he annex at that time. He signed a consent to access. And it says specifically such time as Monty Boland no longer resides on the property. I mean, I don't see how that could be any more clear than, than this. Or if there's a change in ownership. And as I just mentioned, the ownership changed at least a couple of, at the, at least once during this period of time. So, I personally am-
Mayor Rose.
-reluctant to, who's talking there?
May I come, may I comment?
Let me finish.
Okay.
I, I personally have a real hard time, and I, I mean, I'm sympathetic. But the issue here is, we somehow think this property is worth six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it would be if it was a residential property inside the city limits with city services. But it's none of those. It's, it's, it's only a residential property until it comes into the city. So, the property's worth, you know, nearly that, but it's, it, yeah, I, I'm not here to, to determine the value. I, I understand why you would ask for an exemption like this. I would too, probably. But as city councillor, I owe it to the rest of the city to make sure that the decisions that I make here do not set precedence that we're going to regret down the line. And I, I'm feeling like this is one of those decisions that is going to determine how the future of this issue works in Newburgh. And I'm sorry, I, I, but that's the way I feel about this, so further discussion. Mr. Gunn, you had to-
Respectfully, you, I, I want to make sure I understand. I think you said that this property, you're talking about Monty Boland's property nineteen oh one changed hands several times during this period of time? Maybe I misunderstood you?
Mm-hmm.
That, that never changed hands. Monty Boland owned that property from nineteen ninety-seven till the day he died. It's, it's, now it's owned by the estate of Monty Boland, but there was never any, any intervening owner other than him from nineteen ninety-seven till when he passed away.
Was that the property you were talking about, or were you talking about nineteen hundred?
Yeah.
One of them, and I, I forget, I mean, I read through all these documents, and they're, they're all have slightly different versions of the same story. But I know that D M R owned one of the properties at one time, which is not Monty Boland exclusively. D M R is its own entity and it's a, a, a separate owner, I'm sorry. Yeah, well, uh, right, either the one that the meter's on or the one that we want the meter to be on. The question, I guess, I've, a couple of questions for, for staff, uh, or the first one for you, I guess. Do we still want the meter on the, on the lot that it's on? Are we going to have two meters, or are we making that one go away?
No, there's going to be two meters. The, the reason that they don't want a shared meter is, city doesn't really want that anymore anyway, as far as what the, what I get from talking, Mr. Siegel, Mr. Music. The, the meter is going to be there to service nineteen hundred, which is obviously minimal usage. I might, I might add, the finance director would probably be a better person. Nineteen hundred's in the city, nineteen hundred's going to start getting a bill, and that's going to have the add-ons on there, I assume, for the public safety, et cetera, so.
Well, uh, two more questions I would have is, we've talked about access, it's not part of this, this problem. But does this not have access off the other street? What is it, we call that freedom street now?
Which property are you asking me about?
The nineteen hundred.
Nineteen hundred gets this access where that, off of Springbrook Road where that crosshatching is. And that's, that's an access that was granted by ODOT over, uh,
Yeah, I, I, I read the documents, it's a bit ambiguous, I'll give you that.
They didn't, they didn't grant an easement, it was, that was-
The other, the other parcel, though, does it not have, it looks like I see a driveway going out to-
It gets, it gets its access off of McKern Court.
Okay.
Yes.
So, the other question I have is, where is the septic on that property?
I don't know, I'd prefer that.
So, if, if you continue to use this as a residential property, do we know when the last time that septic was serviced? Okay, all right, well, well, and, and, but at some point, you're going to need to replace the septic or fix the septic. And then they're going to require you to hook up to the sewer, which means annexing to the city, we're right back to where we started. I don't see any way for, for this to happen without the annexation takes, taking place. Now, the annexation is going to be a type-three approval, which is going to take about three months. Scott, about what is the expense for a, uh, for that process, do you know?
Uh, planning fees for annexation is two thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars plus two hundred and seventy-eight dollars per acre. This is less than an acre, but you get the idea. Plus, there's a five percent technology fee. Yeah, and then, of course, there's costs associated with engineering and, and the applicant.
But by annexing and hooking up to the sewer and to the water, now your property is truly worth the kind of money that you're, you're trying to sell it for. I, you know, I know it's, it's, it's-
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
You, you made a comment, if, if that, and I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding you, maybe I'm, maybe it's me. You said if that septic has to be repaired, they're going to require sewer hookup. Now, if that's in, if that property remains in the county, I don't understand how anybody could require a sewer hookup. That septic has to be repaired.
God, I'm, I'm, it's a year, but-
Yeah, I'm not prepared to cite code on that, but within a certain distance, I think it's two hundred or three hundred feet of an existing municipal system. If your septic system fails, the county will tell you, you've got to connect to city sewer. And it's required, I believe, by D E Q as well.
That's if it fails, right?
If it fails, correct.
Okay.
They fail eventually, I, I mean, um, it's, it's not now. So, Elise.
Okay, I think I'm going to surprise Mr. Gunn. I've thought a lot about this, and so, let me see if I can just get, if I'm, if I'm tracking correctly here. So, the two asks are, one, to dissolve or the legal term, the agreement, rescind the agreement that a, that annexation has to happen. Rescind, okay. And two is to waive the S D C fees.
No, that's, well, I'll let you finish, I'm sorry.
Um, in my time on council, we've had a couple, to your, your earlier point of hardships. And this conversation always comes up of, you know, when do you set the precedent? Um, I was struggling bef- before coming into the meeting, um, with the statement in the document that it doesn't meet the requirement for exception for, um, greater city, I forget the wording, but impact. Um, after listening to this, I do think that I'm of the opinion that every time we have the opportunity to protect property rights inside with, um, residents, residents that are in a really, in a pickle. And I can tell that this is a very complicated scenario, and to enter into annexation would have large, I'm sure, financial impacts. One, on time, which I, it sounds like there isn't time right now with the reversed mortgage scenario. I think what also kind of swayed me ironically was a public comment given by Buddy, um, of not the same scenario, but, um, one that I think tugged at all of our hearts, um, around a death and an, and a property that is vacated. Um, and not every resident in our community can plan for when, when they pass and their property and the people that have absorbed the financial burden of that. I don't think that we're going to have, to Mr. Gunn's point, a very like scenario to this. This is, seems to be an extreme circumstance. And I do think that that's one, um, privilege of being an elected councillor to make the exceptions when, um, residents come and outline their, their case to us. So, I think, um, I'm siding on supporting. Um, if legally we are allowed to rescind the agreement, um, I would support that and side with the property owners. And as for the S D C charges, um, I feel like, you know, I'm like, really, look at Will's face. I think that I, I think that, um, I can understand the argument around, um, it not being a change of use. And I understand the capacity argument, but I think I could, I could live with it not being a change of use. And I think that's probably where I stand, and I would, I would vote to support both.
Thank you. Mayor Roesecker, could I comment on one of your questions to me, if I may, please? And this, I'm certainly not be, I don't want to be disrespectful to you, I don't want you to take it as that. The, I, uh, my sense is, as to what you were saying is that this property would be worth lots more in the city, inside the city, basically. You know, and I, I will, I will give an honest assessment here. If, if this property was annexed into the city and is industrial, and it had a value of two twenty-five, two thirty, two forty, whatever it is, and there was a reverse mortgage owing of basically that amount, I'd probably tell the client, just walk, okay? Why, why do you want it? And that, and believe me, I don't believe in, in stiffing lenders. Reverse mortgages are guaranteed by the feds. I don't believe in that at all. But my comment to the cl- my, I'm just talking off the top of my head. My advice to the client would probably be, you know what? Why, why do you, why do you want to go through all this hassle? And paying this money to annex into the city, a considerable amount of money, in time when there's going to be nothing, nothing left, if you even have enough money left after you sell this, to pay the reverse mortgage? And that's, that's, I'm not trying to be cynical, disrespectful to you at all, but that would be my comment, is what I'm saying.
Since you brought that up, I disagree with the, uh, with, with the assessment that it's only worth two hundred and twenty-five thousand. I mean, it still has a habitable house on it in the city of Newburgh, um, and that is worth a good deal of money. Whether it's in the city, uh, as a non-conforming use, which will be allowed forever, as long as certain conditions are, are met, it's still worth the same price the other way. The problem for a purchaser here is that they know that at some point in the very near future, they're going to have to hook up to that sewer system, and that's going to be fairly expensive. But when that happens, the property is going to be worth a good deal more money because that money has already been spent. So, uh, I disagree with the two twenty-five, but certainly it's somewhere between that and the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar figure that you have. Again, I, I understand, uh, I mean, I truly do understand, but as a city council, we have to get rid of these islands. We have to bring these into the city in, in the proper way.
So, this may be a question for you, uh, Scott. If, if we were to grant this hardship, is it, is it based on a time limit? Is it like, good for five years, is it good for ten, is it good for four? I mean, because why, I guess the only reason we would be granting it is because they want to put a, another meter? Or why are we even asked to grant this hardship again?
Counselor McBride, it is for the purpose of installing the meter, providing water service to the lot. The, the contract would go in perpetuity, would run with the land. Unless the council sta- specified that certain things must happen by a date certain, then it's open-ended. In other words, if the council were to, you know, stipulate that it must come into the city by a certain date, but that's not what's proposed, and that's not what staff has recommended.
I agree with Elise, um, just about, uh, property rights. Uh, you know, I, I think I sympathize with the, the current owners of the property that, um, you know, if my father left me in the situation, it would be, it'd be pretty difficult, I think. And I, I just, I don't want to infringe on property rights as, you know, um, if we don't have to, and it doesn't sound like we have to. I'm also concerned about generational wealth. I mean, here's an opportunity that, um, if all this is accurate, that the family could earn, uh, receive a substantial, larger amount of money. Um, again, I sympathize with that, uh, having family members who did these things in the past that killed generational wealth in my family. Um, I disagree with Elise with, um, the S D C fees. I would agree with our community development director that this is, you know, we're paying this forward for increased capacity in the future. So, I'm, I'm split.
I mean, basically, the Bolands are in this position because ODOT took their land. So, that kind of put them in this predicament. They didn't plan for it, no one thought that this would ever happen. So, I guess I, I do, I think I am going to side with them. The property rights, the, the inheritance, um, it doesn't really serve this, I mean, it would serve the city a little bit, but to their great detriment. And that would, I wouldn't be able to sleep very well at night knowing. I'm not sold on the S D C fees yet, um, but I do think annexing would, I think you've met your, I think you've proved your point on the, um, annexation, the hardship, I do agree with that. I, I mean, I spent all day going over this, this has been really difficult. I talked to Scott numerous times, what's the right thing? I mean, we as councillors have some power here, um, and I want to do the right thing by the community. As much as, you know, bringing property in, annexing is a ca- a, a council goal, would like to get some of those fees for the water bill, but it would be at this council's detriment. And I just, it just doesn't make sense to do that to them. So, I think that's where I'm going to side. Thank you. I think that's where I'm gonna side. Thank you.
So I think I'm in agreement with, with you guys, um, to one, one degree. I, I think, um, on the SDCs, I, I agree with, with Derek. We have to, we have to look forward on this. I would be willing, if we can do this legally, I would be willing to waive seventy-five percent of this, so they only pay twenty-five percent of the SDCs. We'll get the rest of it. At some point in time, that property is gonna be brought inside the city limits. I'm sure it is. And at that point in time, there'll be a whole bunch of SDCs, unless I'm missing something and Will or somebody can correct me, but that's, I think that's where I'm, I'm leading at this point is I'd be willing waive seventy-five percent of the SDCs, they pay twenty-five, and then grant them the hardship and we move on.
I'll just add quickly that the, the exemption, the exemption ordinance does allow waiver of all or a portion of the SDCs if you do find as a council that it is in the best interest of the city to do that.
All right. I, my final thoughts on this is, uh, I like these people sitting here and I, I, I understand. Put yourself in the place of the person who spends the kind of money that they're talking about for this residential prop- property, which they believe will be able to stay residential property forever and not hook up the sewer, not, not do any of that. And then they decide down the road that they want to do a major remodel on their house and the city says, oh, I'm sorry, you gotta re- you, you're gonna bring it in the city. So we've just taken this problem away from, you know, Monte, the person who made the deal and should be responsible to pay for this, and we're extending it and giving it to whoever purchased this property from Monte's estate. Because they're, they're not going to know going into this, that this is a non-conforming use and it's going to have to be, you know, there I, I mean, they're gonna have the same problem when they decide to do something down the road. So that's my final thought on this problem.
I, I have seen the listing on RMLS and it does, it does mention that there's something going on with the property. So, you know, if you were buying this property, it does say buyer due diligence or some other wording like that. So it's obvious that there's something going on. So whoever buys it will have to consider that.
Can I ask a question to, to what you just said of you? Um, so are you, wouldn't any property owner that is that adjacent to city limits have knowledge or some sort of foresight to know that if they have any sort of change or that they would be subject to potential annex? I mean, I think that, I mean, but that's not, I don't, I don't, I don't think I agree fully with, I see your point, but I don't think I agree fully that, you know, we're shifting, we're passing the buck. I think that that is the property, that's the, that's the, for the buyer's responsibility to research the property of that they're, that they're purchasing and I mean, I think most people, maybe, maybe they don't, but I don't, I don't feel guilt of that. I don't feel guilt of that personally.
I'm gonna try to articulate this well, but I, I may not get it right. Mr. Bowlin made an agreement with the city seven years ago, or I'm sorry, probably seventeen years ago. And the reason you folks would like us to rescind that agreement is because it's in reverse mortgage and the money's tight, there, or there is none? Yeah, I wa- I want to hear why this is even up for discussion. If, if what, what would have to be different for this not to even have been raised?
Well, okay, it's, it's triggered by the payment of the reverse mortgage, but that's, that's kind of an effect of it, okay? This, while both properties were in common ownership, I mean, I don't mean common, they were owned, nineteen hundred was owned by family, his son and Monte owned nineteen oh one. That shared meter never, there was, the problem never arose with that. The problem is now he's dead, okay? This property has to be sold. The reverse mortgage is a fact, it has to be sold, but if the reverse mortgage wasn't there, it would be the same problem when that property is sold, okay? You, you can't sell the property if you take a strict interpretation of that agreement that was signed by him in twenty oh seven without annexing it into the city. Assuming that you don't take the strict interpretation, a buyer is gonna have to buy this property, subject to a shared meter on another property, that I can tell you is, from a legal standpoint, is a problem awaiting to happen, okay? I mean, there are shared well agreements. I've seen those some in the county. There are nothing like this. So you're, you're dealing with somebody that you don't know who's gonna own that property and then you're gonna have to share the meter. The city doesn't really even want that shared meter, how it, I mean, conversation with Mr. Siegel and Mr. Miss, they would really like, like a separate meter on the other property. The only way to get a separate meter on nineteen oh one is to rescind that original agreement and, which we're asking to do, and apply for a hardship for a new meter on nineteen oh one, because it's impossible to get water service to nineteen oh one on a new meter without a hardship application, properties outside the city limits. So that, I hope that answered your question.
Yes, it's got so many tentacles that I keep, my mind keeps moving around on different ones, but I don't see this as a property rights issue. And I, if we choose to rescind uh, Mr. Bowlin's original agreement, I still think the SDCs should be paid. And I would actually like, if, I'm not putting you on the spot too much, Christine, how you weigh in on this?
Well, as to the first question, the, the first part of this, do you grant the hardship exemption? That's obviously, uh, up to the judgment of the council. Um, the SDC issue, you are allowed to waive SDCs if they are owed. Um, if you think that that is within the best interest of the city and that's a policy decision, um, whether you think it's in the best interest to grant that waiver or partial waiver or to collect the the SDC fees, um, and whether an exemption applies uh, that would have them in place at all to be waived, I think Scott spoke to, so. I, I hope I answer your question, but it really is a policy decision when you, when you're, you're talking about the best interest of the city standard and then it's, it's just a judgment decision and choices to whether to, to grant the new hardship exemption at all.
I believe that the, there are two separateish decisions here procedurally. And I feel like the first decision is definitely within the realm of, of a policy-setting council-level decision and not one that, that staff can weigh in on. And it's the balance between truthfully, what's best for the Newburgh community versus some of the things that have been brought up about generational wealth and the circumstances that are impacting the family that have been hit. That's a really hard thing to balance. And for that, I, I do not envy your task to sit in the seat tonight. But I know you're the right people to send the seat. I know that. So the second thing though is with regard to system development charges, I believe that it would be fair if a new meter goes in for the SDCs to be paid. And the reason why I believe that is because the benefits will be accrued to everybody who pays those SDCs for the things that we all know we have to build. And we've worked so hard to have the lowest SDC rates now in the entire region, which we have. But we still have to build the things we have to build. So that concept of playing it forward, because that water plant has to be built and that water plant will provide water to everybody with a meter. But with regard to the first question, that, that lies with council, I would say.
Yeah. Um, the last question, I, and I don't mean to put on people on the spot here unnecessarily here, but I do, I understand, I understand the, the conversation happening and the precedent around sending SDCs. I still stand that I don't think we should, I think we should rescind the annexing portion. Um, but my question, I guess Mr. Gunn may be able to answer this, is if we were to rescind the annexation, theoretically, that should open them up to be able to, um, not continue to bleed money on this property. Um, but is the issue with paying the SDCs, if we were to move that we rescind the annexation, pay the SDCs, is the issue that it's an up, like ca- capital upfront concern? Or is it, um, I'm wondering how fast, I actually don't know this answer, how fast someone has to pay the SDCs um, in order to move forward? As they, so before, before the change? Okay, that was what I, you could do like an installment plan over time.
Yeah, uh, we do have installment plans available for SDCs. Um, they do come, I think it's like the prime rate that we set. We have a certain city rate that we have. I don't know that off the top of my head because we don't do the SDC deferrals very often, but I think it's like the prime rate plus something is the interest rate owed on it.
To answer your question, any any costs associated with whatever, we, we already know we're gonna have to pay the cost of the, assuming this gets approved, the cost of the installation, the meter, et cetera. The SDCs are gonna be a cost on top of that, that if you rule, we have to pay them, they're gonna have to be paid, okay? Now, these people are the ones that have been fronting the money. I don't know if they've got seventy, eight hundred dollars to front right now on that. But I wanted to, if I may, counsel, your, your original question was this, this is a two-part application. The, the first part deals with the rescission of the existing contract. Assuming the council votes to do that, then in order for this to be, in order for our application to be approved in total, you would have to grant, you, the council would, would grant the hardship application for a meter, separate meter on nineteen oh one with the conditions associated with that. And as I said, the annexation trigger to annex in the future would, would be not included in that. Otherwise, nobody's ever gonna buy that property. I hope I explained that to you.
Can I make a motion? Or are we? All right. I will move that we rescind the agreement, the hard, the annexation agreement, um, and I'll make allowable two separate meters at nine oh one and nine hundred, or nineteen oh one and nineteen hundred.
Pause there.
Second?
All right, we have a motion that we allow the waiver and a second. Is there any further discussion?
May I ask?
I know that, uh, I know that
I just wanted to make sure, you know, the, the other part of the resolution would be to direct staff to also go ahead and draft the new agreement. So I just want to make sure that that's, that's part of it.
I was, that's, that's exactly where I was going. Thank you. Um, what are our parameters? We, we want them to draw a new agreement. Is it just gonna be open-ended forever? Is there some point in the future that they're going to be required to annex?
Do you want me to try again?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that I, I think that we should probably put more, more guardrails on this thing, not just leave it wide open, but that's, I mean, I'm, that's just a suggestion.
It could be in the form of a motion directing staff to, and then what the different criteria that you would like to see. If you wouldn't want it to be open-ended, you would add some extra criteria or you would leave it open-ended. Um, and then you could also slip into the sentence with system development charges included, or you could add with a waiver of system development charges. So that's, the motion would capture those intents and then staff would go forward and develop the document.
Sorry, I thought we were separating out the SDC portion and it was gonna be two separate motions. That's my, okay. Okay. All right, I'm gonna attempt again. Let's see here. So, um, I move that we direct staff to prepare, prepare a resolution and contract for uh, extraterrestrial, what is that? Okay, thank you. Water service and consent to annexation. For nineteen, I thought it was nineteen oh one, nine oh one. I'm sorry. Nine, okay, sorry. South McKern Court. Um, this contract would then replace existing groups in two thousand and seven by city resolution. Um, but to add the caveat that Mayor Rossacker just stated, I would uh, move that we, that this, that staff include that this is for residential, if, if there was a change in use, that it would be subject to annexation. So moved, yes. In perpetuity guarding, what did you say? Barring a change of use, yeah.
So once staff drafts this, then it comes back to us for review to make sure you got it right or we, okay, thank you.
So once again, I want to remind you, this is not in perpetuity. At some point, they're gonna want to remodel this house who built in nineteen forty-eight. And that's going to force whoever owns this property at the time to annex it to the city of Newburgh, hook it up to the proper services. I also, yeah. So I'd like to see more sideboards on it than just that, but I'm, I'm not, I mean, it's your bill.
I move we amend Elise's motion to include these sidebars that the mayor just mentioned with regard to uh, future buyers and remodeling and what that.
May I?
Yeah, Scott, help us out here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, uh, the development code, uh, Newburgh Municipal Code fifteen, two oh five oh four oh, non-conforming uses, uh, establishes that there's no expansion or abandonment of a non-conforming use, uh, otherwise that non-conforming right goes away. Um, and for residential, uh, residential is allowed to continue in perpetuity, but again, if it's expanded, so remodeling, an interior remodel wouldn't trigger, um, annexation. But if they were to add on to the dwelling or develop another accessory structure, an accessory dwelling unit or some other use or change the use development or change of use, that would, um, that would, uh, make the non-conforming right go away and they'd have to bring it into performance. If it were annexed in the city, in the county, it has a different set of zoning requirements.
And the, the most likely thing to go up would be the sewer. Would that also incur, or would that force annexation and, and hook up to our sewer?
For, for different reasons, yes. Yeah.
Looks like the previous agreement was filed with Amiello County, right? So if someone were to sell this house in the future, they would get these documents stating that this is in effect. Is that correct?
It would show up in a title report if it's reported against the deed.
And the seller would have access to that. The buyer would have access to that information when they're buying the home. So that, that I think is enough protection to do our due diligence for any per, any upcoming buyers because they're gonna get that report and I think that's, that's sufficient.
And I.
I'm not sure how any of this is gonna show up in a title report. Uh, because we're not gonna, there's no documents to be recorded here, well, that's not true. This agreement would be recorded, but the remainder of it would not, okay.
I would only add that, you know, a diligent buyer could always, and many buyers do ask the city for public records relating to the property they're considering buying. And so we would be obliged to provide this whole record, this, this whole proceedings if someone were to ask for that. So there's a public record along with the document that would be recorded and, and part of the deed. But, you know, a thoughtful buyer would have access to that information.
So are you confident that we've given you enough direction to move forward if we approve what we just?
The motion that is on the table is, I think, provides sufficient direction to staff if, if you were to approve it.
Currently, we have an amendment motion on the table as well as regular motions, so those will need to be closed out or withdrawn.
So, okay.
Draw my motion for an amendment.
Just gonna allow with no caveat, okay? So is there any further discussion? I think we better vote by, by hand, so all in favor signify by raising your hand. All opposed, same sign.
Okay, can I see the vote again there, opposed was?
I'm sorry, that's the amendment, now we're gonna vote on the motion.
Oh, for, well, the amendment was withdrawn. Sorry.
Just to make sure, let's go ahead and vote one more time on the motion. All in favor signify by raising your hand. All opposed, same sign, all right, the motion passes.
So I'm just asking again because I, I saw Peggy's hand still up and opposed, were you on your way down? Okay, so our one opposed vote is Mayor Rosacker, okay, thank you.
May I now ask for a motion for clarifying the SDC issue?
So now we, yes, how do we feel about this, SDCs? Should we have some discussion, shall we just, somebody make a motion?
I'll try. I will move that we do a fifty percent reduction in SDCs to the applicant.
Okay, second. All right, as far as discussion goes, I would like to turn to our attorney. Do we have the ability to reduce? We have the ability to waive, but can we reduce?
I think you, I, if, if I understand correctly, what you are proposing is to waive fifty percent of the SDCs, which you are allowed to do if you do find it is in the best interest of the city to do so. Right.
So we have a motion and a second, so discussion. And I would like to start. I think this is a horribly dangerous precedent to start. Because there's not a purchaser out there that wouldn't like, a builder out there that wouldn't like to have a reduction on SDCs. And I really do not want to see them lining up at these meetings, coming in here, asking us for a fifty percent reduction because they feel like they're, they're hardship in some way, so that's my opinion.
You, you pretty much voiced mine as well, I think we should keep the SDCs intact.
My position typically would be what you're saying, is to hold true to SDCs and to have as, as fair of a process across the board. And I know that our developers struggle massively with SDCs. That said, the reason I'm making the motion for the fifty percent reduction is because this is an extraordinary circumstance on a resident that has bear, is bearing the burden of a previous homeowner. And I think that every time we can support someone that is in need, a person, a resident, a longtime resident of Newburgh who is also a, a small business owner, I think it's important to do so, so that is my stance. I do think that it is not outside, I don't think it, I'm actually comfortable setting a precedent frankly to support extraordinary circumstances that we can hash out together at length as we have. And the only ones we have in the past were very similar, me, were very similar scenarios. And, yeah, sorry.
If, if I, oh, I was just going to, to make a quick clarifying point that this waiver is only available in a circumstance where you've granted a hardship exemption to begin with. So it's, it's not like, it's not like it would be something that would set precedent every time somebody had to pay SDCs. It's only in the circumstance of, you've already granted the hardship exemption and you have an additional option once you've done that to waive all or part of the SDCs.
I mean, that's exactly what I was gonna say, I don't think we're setting a precedent because this is completely different than somebody coming to us and going, I don't want to pay these SDCs. And I would go, I'm sorry, that's exactly what you're gonna do, you know? So I think this is different and I, I, I could support this.
So we have a motion on the floor and a second to waive the SDCs on this particular.
Fifty percent.
Oh, fifty percent, thank you. All in favor signify by raising their hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to three, thank you. Does any, is there any other business that anybody wants to bring up today that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, meetings adjourned.
Hey, this is the July third, two thousand and twenty-four Newburgh Urban Renewal Agency meeting, I call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Sorry, I'm trying to decide your titles for nerve a second, there we go. McBride, tongue-tied, give me two seconds. Commissioner, thank you, Will, Commissioner McBride.
Here.
And Commissioner Wheatley, here, Commissioner Yarnell Holloman, here. Commissioner Kilburg, here. And Commissioner Rosacker.
Here.
Commissioner Cloyd.
Here.
And Commission Chair Carmen.
Here. Uh, so very quickly, this is just to establish a new CAC chair left vacant by Molly Olson leaving. So I would like to recommend that Commissioner Kilburg be appointed to the CAC chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to move that we appoint Commissioner Kilburg to the CAC Citizens Advisory Committee. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any other discussion? All right, all in favor? Okay, we'll raise our hands, all in favor? All right, all opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously, thank you Peggy for your service. And the meeting's adjourned.